Whenever you're ready. You're on mute, Lisa.
Sorry, sorry, folks. Just a second. Okay, welcome to the San Mateo County Planning Commission meeting of December, February 10, 2021. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with justice, delivering justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, couldn't find the unmute button. Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Hansen.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Chair Ketchum.
Here.
Staff is represented by Monowitz with support by Montes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Oral Communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any subject that is not on today's regular agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. First staff will explain how the public comment process works for our remote meeting.
Thank you. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we'll use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for those each for those each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, plus plus star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt and connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an agenda item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and you and inform you that you may begin speaking. Thank you.
Is no one for Oral Communications?
No one stands raised for Oral Communications at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull either item for discussion? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
I.
Commissioner Hansen.
I.
Commissioner Ramirez.
I.
Chair Ketchum.
I.
Here. I. Moving on to the regular agenda, our order of procedure for today's study session on Connect the Coast Side will start with a presentation by county planning, followed by questions and comments from commissioners. Then we'll open open public comment and each member of the public who wishes to speak will have three minutes. Then we will close public comment followed by staff opportunity to address any questions raised by the public. And last, the commission will have follow up comments to summarize key points. Ms. Ms. Luhon, will you introduce the item?
Sure. We have owner applicant San Mateo County Planning and Building Department, file number PLN 2014-004330. And presenting today is Shonda Singh, Katie Faulkner, and Joe Leclerc. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Ketchum and Commissioners. We're delighted to be before you today to present Connect the Coast Side, the San Mateo County Comprehensive Transportation Management Plan for the San Mateo County Midcoast. This project has been a long time coming and we're at a point now where we feel that we have really addressed the comments from the community as best we can. Of course, we're interested to hear what they have to say today, but we have embarked on a very aggressive engagement effort with the community starting over a year ago at following publication of the September 2019 draft and and then the subsequent January 2020 draft. And I believe that we learned a great deal from our engagement with the community and we were supported by team of of only staff that included members of the Office of Sustainability, the County Manager's Office, as well as legislative staff from Supervisor Horstley's office. And we've made every effort we we could under the conditions left us by COVID to provide meaningful opportunities for engagement and and really aggressive listening. And I do want to also express my appreciation for my staff, Chanda Singh and Katie Faulkner for their great work on this project and bringing it to this point. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Katie to begin the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Just give me a minute and I will share my screen. All right, does that look?
It works.
See that? Great, thank you. All right. Thank you, members of the Planning Commission for having us here today to discuss Connect the Coast Side. And thank you, members of the public, for joining us for this discussion. My name is Katie Faulkner and I'm a long range planner with the County of San Mateo Planning and Building Department. I'll be presenting today along with my colleague Chanda Singh, Senior Transportation Planner. So we'll start today with an overview of Connect the Coast Side and then we'll share what we heard from stakeholders during our outreach efforts, followed by a summary of the plan's recommendations. And lastly, next step, realizing the plan. So Connect the Coast Side is the San Mateo County Midcoast Comprehensive Transportation Management Plan. The plan creates an overall vision for transportation on the midcoast and sets priorities for future investments in transportation focused on safety and mobility for residents, businesses, and visitors. And it also covers the topics of walking, biking, public transit, driving, and landings. So Connect the Coast Side focuses on the midcoast areas surrounding Highway One and Highway 92, including unincorporated, including the unincorporated communities of Montero, Moss Beach, Algronada, Princeton, and Miramar. The initial stimulus for Connect the Coast Side came out of the Midcoast Local Coastal Program update back in 2012. This update called for the development of a comprehensive transportation management plan to address the cumulative traffic impacts of development on roads and highways in the midcoast. The project started in 2014. And over the next few years, the project team produced several reports that projected future development on the midcoast, analyzed current and future transportation deficiencies, and made recommendations for transportation improvements based off of that information. Throughout this process, the project team has engaged the community and agency stakeholders to provide feedback. And this feedback changed the course of the plan's recommendations over time. In 2019, staff worked on putting together a draft of the complete plan and a public draft of the plan was released last year in January 2020. During the spring, summer, and fall, we heard feedback on that draft. And we used all input to update the plan and then released a final administrative draft for review on January 20th, 2021. Now I'll talk a little bit about what we heard. So hearing input from people who live, work, and visit the midcoast has been very important, has been a very important part of this plan. From 2014 to 2019, we engaged stakeholders about the plan's development in a variety of ways. For example, we held multiple meetings of a technical advisory committee with representatives from key agencies, including Half Moon Bay, Caltrans, and Cabrillo Unified School District. Outreach efforts also included for public workshops and presentations to the Midcoast Community Council, the Planning Commission, and the City of Half Moon Bay. Additionally, we had a charrette focused on recommendations at Highway One and Cypress Avenue. The feedback we received from those efforts helped shape the plan in several ways. Initially, our consultant folk or consultant team focused on recommending projects that met the current standards, the current transportation performance standards, which would have required projects like widening Highway One. But the community made it clear that this was not in line with their vision for the coast side and asked that the team develop new transportation performance standards that emphasized multimodal travel, like walking and biking as a solution and to avoid any widening of the highway. Additionally, stakeholders wanted to see the plan better align with recommendations of other community-based planning efforts, such as Highway One Safety Mobility Study and Plan Princeton. We also heard a continued desire to limit development and support for policies that would help to do so, including lot merger and retirement programs and a transportation impact mitigation fee. That feedback resulted in the public January 2020 draft that recommended multimodal transportation solutions, incorporated relevant projects from other planning efforts, and made sure existing safety concerns were addressed. The outcome of that early stakeholder feedback also resulted in a vision and goals for the Connect the Coast Side project, including improving existing and future traffic conditions on the midcoast, increase up increasing opportunities, walking, biking, and riding transit, respecting the character of the midcoast and protecting its coastal and environmental resources, and improving access to those coastal resources. So after the January 2020 draft was released, we used a variety of methods to connect with people to gather additional feedback. Our methods included three virtual meetings, surveys, posting videos about the plan, updating the website with information and a comment box, attending multiple midcoast community council meetings, Spanish language outreach, and two youth group meetings. We collected many comments from this outreach and we reviewed and summarized all those comments in our 2020 outreach summary report. So a major theme that we heard is that traffic continues to be a big problem, especially on the weekends. People also had concerns over future development and the connection between Connect the Coast Side projects and pipeline development projects. We heard that existing conditions make it difficult to walk, bike, and take transit. And we heard continued support for projects that would make it safer and easier to walk by and take transit. We also heard that most stakeholders continue to value the the midcoast character and environment, and most did not want to see the highway widened. Stakeholders were more divided about how to improve driving conditions and specifically how to improve intersections of Highway One and side streets. So now I'll turn it over to Chanda to review the January 21, 2021 draft.
Thanks, Katie. And next slide. The plan is organized into three sections, an executive summary, a draft plan with eight chapters and appendices that include references to past reports and data. Based on the feedback that we received on the January 2020 draft, the project team added more tables, figures, maps, and photos, additional contextual information, and excerpts from other documents to the plan. And all of these edits were really aimed to enhance the readability and legibility of the final administrative draft. Next slide. Most of the plan's recommended projects are in direct response to stakeholder concerns and priorities and intend to address current transportation challenges. Connect the Coast Side includes projects from other community-based planning processes like Plan Princeton and projects being led by partners like Caltrans. It also includes projects to address future transportation conditions. Projects were narrowed or modified based on conceptual feasibility, cost, environmental considerations, and their ability to reduce the overall demand for driving. To identify projects to meet future transportation conditions, the project team first collected and analyzed data on existing transportation conditions, then projected future development and analyzed the resulting transportation impacts, and then finally identified projects to address those projected impacts. So in order to determine impacts, Connect the Coast Side used current transportation performance standards. The local coastal program currently uses a measure called level of service to measure roadway and intersection performance. And level of service describes the operating condition of a road from the perspective of a driver, and it's measured on a letter scale where A is mostly considered free flow and F is congested. A roadway would not be performing to the LCP standard if it falls below level of service D or E during certain time periods, like on the weekends when there are lots of visitors coming to the coast. Generally, improving level of service requires changes that allow a person driving to get through an intersection or move along a roadway more quickly. And the options to make those improvements are fairly limited. So either the number of cars on the road must decrease or the capacity of the road or the intersection must increase to handle a volume of cars. And increasing capacity usually means improvements like widening streets, adding more lanes of travel, or adding dedicated right turn or left turn lanes at an intersection. As Katie mentioned, since midcoast stakeholders rejected the idea of highway widening, which would be the primary way to improve roadway level of service, Connect the Coast Side recommends using a different performance standard called the delay index. The delay index compares how long it takes to travel from one point to another during congested times versus free flow times. So the delay index is a more flexible metric because it doesn't depend on measuring traffic volumes and capacity, but it really focuses on the user experience. So using the delay index for performance allows for more solutions to traffic problems that can further the multimodal vision for the midcoast and improve level of service as more people decide not to drive. The midcoast is a unique place in San Mateo County and the Bay Area and has primarily low density residential communities surrounded and interspersed with open space. And Highway One serves as the primary way to access midcoast communities. Conditions along Highway One vary from rural undeveloped surroundings where traffic is very free flow to more urban settings where in the village areas where there's cross traffic, parking, and driveway access. Connect the Coast Side's recommendations aim to leverage the unique opportunities present on the midcoast in order to improve access to coastal resources and improve safety and mobility for coast side residents. So with that, I'll highlight some of the plan's recommended infrastructure projects. We heard from stakeholders that it's challenging to cross Highway One and make turns right now. And certain locations are expected to have more traffic under future buildout conditions. The plan recommends intersection controls in Moss Beach and along Highway 92 to create safer conditions for all roadway users and to help meet performance standards. The plan states a preference for roundabouts, but the final determination will be based on the outcomes of required intersection control evaluation and feasibility analysis, which must be done in coordination with Caltrans. There are no continuous walking or bicycling facilities along the midcoast posing posing a challenge for residents and visitors trying to travel to different communities by foot or bike. So the multimodal parallel trail will be a dedicated Class One walking and biking path on the east side of Highway One, connecting all midcoast communities and Half Moon Bay. The parallel trail is an important recommendation to address the existing safety concerns and meet the delay index performance standard by providing a high quality alternative facility to driving. The California Coastal Trail is an important local and regional destination and other planning efforts like the Highway One Safety and Mobility Study have recommended alignments of the trail. And Connect the Coast Side builds upon those recommendations and includes a project to complete the coastal trail from Montero to Half Moon Bay. The parallel trail will serve as one section of the coastal trail alignment. Since each midcoast community's access from Highway One, safe pedestrian crossings are critical to connectivity and supporting active transportation. There is nearly a six mile stretch of Highway One where there are no crossings at a signal. And there's just one uncontrolled marked crossing at Virginia Avenue and Moss Beach of Highway One. So Connect the Coast Side recommends high visibility marked crossings with pedestrian activated overhead or rapid flashing beacons to connect key destinations like bus stops and central commercial areas. Marked crossings are also recommended to create continuous and visible walking routes for the parallel and coastal trails. Connect the Coast Side recommends several changes to Carlos Street and Moss Beach to address stakeholder and safety concerns. This includes realigning the northern end of Carlos Street to meet 16th Street, changing the orientation of Carlos Street to one way to make room for the parallel trail, and adding sidewalk where it's missing in this downtown area. Safe routes to school is very important to midcoast stakeholders and the San Mateo County Office of Education and Cabrillo Unified School District already lead really robust safe routes to school programs. So Connect the Coast Side recommends specific projects to create safer routes to school, building off of the past work done by these partners. This includes recommendations for continuous sidewalks, bikeways, and marked crossings on common routes to school in order to create safer conditions for students and parents and encourage more people to walk and bike for their school trip. Main Street and Montero will serve as part of the parallel trail alignment and currently has disconnected sidewalks and missing curb ramps. Similarly, there are some missing sidewalk segments and ramps in Central Moss Beach on California Avenue and Ethelmore Street. So Connect the Coast Side recommends completing and connecting those sidewalks, creating continuous bikeways and adding ADA curb ramps. Increasing transit ridership for longer distance trips and for those visiting the coast is an important opportunity to reduce traffic and greenhouse gases. Midcoast stakeholders shared how challenging it can be to ride transit right now because of the long wait times between buses and the lack of amenities at bus stops. So Connect the Coast Side recommends enhancements to encourage more people to take transit, including better bus stops by providing ADA accessible loading platforms and benches, increasing bus frequencies of coast side buses, including Samtrans Route 17, and additional commuter commuter and visitor serving services to connect to BART and Caltrans. Highway One has to serve many uses and, as we already mentioned, its dynamic changes throughout the coast side. So Connect the Coast Side recommends or includes recommendations originally proposed in the Highway One Safety and Mobility Study. And those include a standardized roadway edge design, sidewalks in commercial areas in Montero and Moss Beach, bike lanes along Highway One, and turn and acceleration lanes at Eighth Street and Montero and at the Graywell Cove parking lot. Many stakeholders already ride bikes recreationally and for transportation on the coast, and they shared a desire for better bikeways. So Connect the Coast Side recommends bike parking and bikeways throughout the midcoast, including on Airport Street and Cypress Avenue to connect Moss Beach and Princeton, on Capistrone Road, and a Class Three bikeway with widened shoulders on Highway 92. And these recommendations are also consistent with the adopted unincorporated San Mateo County Active Transportation Plan. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Katie.
Thanks, Chanda. All right. So in addition to the infrastructure projects, the plan also includes recommendations for future planning studies. For example, some sections of Highway One and the coastal trail are at risk due to sea level rise and coastal erosion. And we need to study those issues further to come up with the best solutions for the community. We also recommend further study and planning on parking in the Surfers Beach area and Princeton area. The plan also includes updated land use policies, including the lot merger, including lot lot merger policy language, and to specify that the lot retirement program will be based on outcomes of the lot merger program. The plan includes preliminary calculations for the transportation impact mitigation fee program and describes the next steps required to enact that fee. The plan also includes recommended programs, for example, using educational campaigns to address speeding, recommended standards, including suggested amendments to the local coastal program, and regularly regularly reporting on the status of Connect the Coast Side implementation, and describes existing efforts led by the county that address other stakeholder concerns. For example, like the local coast, like the local hazard mitigation plan, which the county has recently started work to update and will recommend projects that mitigate risk from hazards. Connect the Coast Side projects are anticipated to be implemented using a mix of county funding, regional or statewide grants, and the new transportation impact mitigation fee over a third year horizon. Nearly all of the plan's recommendations will require strong partnerships and approval from agencies like Caltrans and Samtrans. And each project will likely go through its own separate detailed planning and design process, which will include additional community engagement, environmental assessment, and detailed design recommendations. During future project implementation phases, we might, we may find out that some projects that seem feasible in concept now may be impossible due to unforeseen limitations. Lastly, the plan includes a general implementation timeline for each project and a list of early actions that the county that county planning and building staff intends to lead in collaboration with others like Caltrans. Since Connect the Coast Side is a long range plan, we anticipate that these actions and timelines will change or change over time. All right, next steps for completing the plan. So we have already presented that one MCC meeting and we are planning on presenting at a second midcoast community council meeting on February 24. Then we will take the plan and we'll take the feedback that we receive and update the plan and environmental documents in March and April. And we hope to publish a final draft in May. Then we would take the plan back to the Midcoast Community Council and the City of Half Moon Bay and the Planning Commission for final recommendations. And the last stop would be the Board of Supervisors, likely in July of this year for final adoption and approval. All right. Thank you, everyone, for listening. We are here to answer your questions and to hear your comments. And you can also email us questions or comments and visit the Connect the Coast Side website to read about the plan and for more information. Thank you.
You're on mute.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Now I'll have Commissioner questions and comments. And Commissioner Gupta, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. It's, first I have to say it's a very well-written document as well as a good presentation, very comprehensive. Very thorough. Okay. But there's a lot of information there. Especially for me, this is the, I shouldn't say first time, but I believe this was brought in front of Planning Commission some years ago. I don't know how much it has changed since, but there's a lot of information. And and I would say I did my due diligence going through as much of it as possible. Okay. So many comments, but I would hold those off. I would also like to add that I went through the FAQ, the frequently asked questions on the MCC website. And that's such a good idea. But I found information in there which was truly not easily accessible in the 700-page document. So I'm very thankful for that. So let me come down to some of the questions that I had. So let me come down to some of the questions that I have. They are all over the place. Okay. So. I do not live in that area. So, so my questions come from. Visiting this, what we call eclectic area. Very pretty. A good destination for people, not just from the other side of the county or outside that area, but wider Bay Area. And. So some of the things, one of the major thing that. I would like to touch upon is, is there. Emergency evacuation plan considering the. The accessibility to the area. There's limited accessibility. Because anytime. An emergency evacuation is kind of goes hand in hand with accessibility to the visitors. Because it's, it's the same highways or access that we are using. So. Is, is there something in, in the number of items that are listed there to be done? Anything specific for the emergency evacuation?
The, and the plan considers the idea of increasing mobility by trying to decrease the volume of cars on the road. And so I think overall, the intention of the plan is to increase mobility by through the, through the projects that are there. One of the, you know, we heard loud and clear from stakeholders that emergency access and evacuation was a high priority. Which is why we included in, I know it's a long document, but in the recommendation section, there are some places where we talk about the existing programs that the county already has and some of. Including vegetation management done by Caltrans. You know, the Office of Sustainability is leading her efforts right now around climate change and access. And then, as Katie mentioned, the local hazard mitigation plan. So, you know, we wanted to, to make a reference to the other ongoing efforts that are happening right now where emergency access and evacuation will be front and center. But the plan itself does support those efforts through its, through the infrastructure recommendations.
Through the chair, if I could. Add that Calfire has recently created a zonal evacuation system that's relatively new. It actually hasn't been used yet on, on the coast, but. The idea behind it is to. Release different areas of the midcoast for. For evacuation to reduce the pressure on the roadway system. So that we don't have everybody leaving at once, because typically the, the, you know, the problem is. Not throughout the midcoast, if, if you will. But anyway, the, the Calfire is working on that and we are intending to. Because we're participating in the local hazard mitigation plan, we intend to. Ensure that follow-on actions from the local hazard mitigation plan include detailed evacuation planning for a variety of scenarios on the coast side.
That, that's really great. No, I, I read about that in the report that they have this plan in place. But because we keep talking about residents don't want adding lanes. But, but when an emergency comes. This, this mode that's going through people's mind at that time, they are not, they don't care about others, right? They need to get out. I was there in that nineteen eighty-nine earthquake. Okay, and that was over the Bay Area, entire Bay Area. And my commute, which used to take me thirty minutes, it took me two hours to get home to my kids. The lights, the traffic lights were not working. Every intersection took so much time. So, so those are the kind of issues we need to plan for, right? So, so I'm glad it's there. As part of your. Plan. But. But, but we, but we need to give that high priority. That's, that's the other thing is because there's a long list of things that will be done. So that the residents feel comfortable, they do not want the character of their area to change. Understandably so, but it would change to some extent, right?
We commit the local hazard mitigation plan to you this summer. When it's in draft form and you can evaluate the actions, we have to finish it by September of this year. So the local hazard mitigation plan will be sort of moving along as, as we're finalizing Connect the Coastside. And the, the emergency evacuation actions that will be included in the local hazard mitigation plan. You can evaluate those and see whether or not you think they're adequate to address this.
Thank you. Thank you. And the other question that I have is. Has since January twenty twenty. Or the January twenty twenty plan or draft. Has this been revisited, keeping what? This COVID pandemic is going to, how it's going to change things for all of us?
I mean, I can jump in and say, I think it is something that we've been thinking about and talking about. And when we did our virtual outreach meetings back in the spring and summer, it was a question that we brought up. To the, to the public, you know, how has, how things changed? And we have heard that, you know. That traffic is worse on the weekends because everybody is coming to visit the beach now because there isn't much else to do. And, you know, so we have had that discussion and we think that this is, you know, a temporary situation. We think that eventually things will open up again and hopefully traffic on the weekends will lighten up because there will be other places for people to go. And so we think that, you know, overall, our, our focus on multimodal solutions for increasing walking and biking and, and transit will be long-term improvements that will fit the midcoast. You know, throughout. Different situations that might arise and throughout the future.
Okay, yeah, we, we really don't know how things will change and how long this situation will last there. And at the other meeting, I heard it's a long-range plan. So when you say long range. What does that mean? How many years are we looking at how things could change in the meantime? Does your study take into account all that?
So yeah, the, the plan is on a thirty-year horizon and in the implementation chapter, we've sort of identified the phases of the project, sort of where we think over sort of short, medium and long term. Splitting up that thirty years, we, we think some of the projects are, we try to move forward. Since so many of the projects are actually based on, you know, current conditions and existing concerns. And, you know, we see an opportunity to try to expedite some of that. There are other projects that are really in there for future concerns, you know, projected. And, and so those are sort of on a longer timeline. And we've included a recommendation to, you know, a report on the status of Connect the Coastside every five years. With the intention that, you know, we, we recognize that conditions will continue to change. Things will change, there'll be different things happening. And so. This is sort of a starting place and a path forward, but that we have to be sort of nimble in the approach that we take for implementation.
Okay, so, so if I understand correctly. Whatever is included in the plan, there's some kind of grouping as to which are. Some things that should be done earlier than later. Do I understand that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Ramirez, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you. And just to follow up on some of the comments from Mrs. Gupta. I also want to thank everybody that was involved on, on this project. I know. It's been a lot of, I'm sure, sleepless nights trying to put this thing together. And thank all the participants. Everyone from county staff, the different organizations, community leaders. And I guess especially supervisors, Horstley, that I think has been spearheading some of these efforts. So with that, I'm just gonna again, thank, thank all of you guys. Some of, I would say, the concerns that I have, I think it's a very thorough document. I mean, there's a lot of information there. You know, impossible to keep everything in your head, but. As in the overall arching. Concept of this, one thing that I was noticing was that. I would like to know, you know, in order to get this to fruition, I think there's many agencies that will have to come on board. And, and work with the county. In order to get some of these things. You know, to a happy end here. And I would say. How committed are some of these agencies to helping? The community to achieve the goals here. I'm thinking of Caltrans and Samtrans. Are they on board? Do they, you know, are they really committed to trying to help? You know, resolve some of the many issues that, that we're going to have along the way. And then just, you know, I'm hoping that at some point we actually have a visit out there to see. Because it's one thing to see it on paper. But I think it would be if at some point, I know we've done like one. Tour out there to some of the projects that we've done in the past. But being that this is such a huge project overall, I think it would be nice if at some point. Maybe not now, obviously because of COVID. But at some point, if we can get up there understanding by going to some of the sites. To figure out what it will entail to actually get some of these things done. So those are the comments that I have at the moment.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson.
Good morning and echoing my other fellow commissioners, it's a great report. What's really nice is I could pick out any one section and walk away with it and have all the information I needed. It is concise. I love that. It identifies the problems, you know, it identifies possible solutions. And I'm going to go through some really minor stuff and you know, something that. I have, because we're really moving from years ago, we were identifying the problems, we moved into how possible solutions. And now we're moving into recommended solutions, working our way to the limitation. So we're toward the end of the process here. So let me, you know, we talked, one of the things. I noticed in here that I, there's always unintended consequences. You identify a problem, you fix it and you think you solved it. My own neighborhood. We have this, we got a school. People barreling through to go drop their kids off, wake up, you know, people trying to walk with, I don't have sidewalks in my neighborhood. And, you know, the solution was putting in more stop signs. And so when I talk about. Fifth with Cross Streets of East in La Corte, I look at that and I said, I've seen this. And I've seen this several times in different areas and the immediate. Resolution, you know, it's put stop signs and stuff, which is not what stop signs are designed for. That's for access to roads, but we're using it for. Mitigation of traffic of speed and act, you know, trying to cross. And for the first six months, it works really well. But it's the same people who drive on the same streets, there are us and our neighbors. And we begin to realize when you put stop sign after stop sign. They're not all equal stop signs. And. You may, what I'm willing to predict is that one of the stop signs people will roll through. And now. Because there's a stop sign, they slowed down and they were looking for cars. The pedestrians on the street think you'll stop and they walk out and we get. Of near hits all the times of pedestrians. Of course, I think the real problem we're trying to solve is make it safer for everybody. I would say putting ca-. Calming solution, traffic calming solution is like a raised sidewalk or a dip or something. Protects the people better than a stop sign. Because a stop sign, the pedestrians assume people, cars will stop. And after six, after a year, two years, three years, because you live in the neighborhood and ninety percent of the time, there's no traffic. You just roll on through and it always catches the pedestrians by surprise and it's, it's a bigger problem. I'm not trying to convince you that there isn't a problem. I'm saying I think there might be a better solution. On. Page one thirty-two, we talk about wayfinding. Wayfinding is absolutely important because. One thing, reading your appendix made me reread everything. Your appendix are so well done and it comes out multiple ways and different areas and in different meetings. Through the years, I have learned that the top two, three problems really that comes in front of us on these area. Studies is traffic, parking, safety. And what comes really clear in the appendix is number one is the character of the area, followed by traffic and safety. Wayfinding is really defining preserving the character of the neighborhood. We're not talking, you know, different generic size and type fonts and all, making a mess of things. If you want to preserve the character, wayfinding has to be thought of how the signs look, how they work, how they flow. If you mess this up, you actually, the most important thing that the residents have said, it is the character of the area. This impacts you. Everybody in many multiple ways and it's immediate. So wayfinding is really critical in how you think of it. Page one thirteen, you show a sign that says tracks, trucks use right lane. You know what? Thinking about this, what we really want to say is trucks right lane only. Only, because when you go up that hill and they don't stay in the right lane, there is just no way for all that massive traffic that builds up behind them. You know, if the truck thinks it could pass and miscalculates how fast it could pass, it doesn't. You've just jammed up a mile. And it takes forever to, no, only, you just, you know, the truckers are just gonna have to tough it out. And it's just the reality of coming in and out of this area. Page, oh, 119. Oh, yeah. 119 shows how an intersection will look. So you can put the trail through there, lighten the streets, and you put the stop sign in. Part of the character of the neighborhood is how really open you, we have fields out there with no fences. It's been that way all my life, you know. That is part of the character. And suddenly, when you look between those two pictures, and I would say it's a nice improvement and everything, but you have a stop sign and you have other signs that are all over that intersection. Is again, it's visual clutter and it's really trying to understand the neighborhood. And even it made me ask, considering I know that street, everybody who goes down that street would stop anyway. So I mean, I understand it's a safety issue, but it's always been the same issue. And I don't think it changes that much because the path walks across it. But just having a stop sign, view it from, the number one concern is the character of the neighborhood. Is that stop sign, even though it's quote, safety or anything else? Is it really necessary? Does it actually change anything? I don't think it will change the character having it or not having it there. And in fact, if anything, it may still save a pedestrian's life because you're so busy concentrating on the car is concentrating, trying to get into one. You're still not looking at pedestrians. And I think pedestrians might think that they're safe to cross. That's, that's just how I interpret that. The demographic session there, I really thought you did a unique way of handling it. And I didn't understand the economic differences of those three related neighborhoods of Moss Beach, Montera and El Granada. They're very different. I lived out in the coast side in the 1970s. I didn't, I don't know if they existed like that then, but they're appreciably different. And that whole section was, I thought was well done. The big issue, the big issue is lot retirement. I've heard this since day one, 11 years ago, when I got on this commission. And I don't see lot retirement. And figuring out lot retirement is having money. Lots of money, big money. And is there any funding to really do this? Because I did a back of the envelope and a number of lots out there. Because when we say we want to preserve the character of the, of the community, we said this in the 70s, when there was half the people that are out there, it really meant less houses being built. You know, when I grew up, in the sixth, I've, I've been going out there since the 1950s when there used to be driftwood on the beaches in Half Moon Bay. And when you could build bonfires with the driftwood, it's just a whole different. My experience is gone and will never be back. What we voted for Prop 20 is gone and it can't come back either. We can only do what we have today. And really, when we, I, I think, and, and you need to challenge me on this or challenge the committee on this to say I got it wrong. We're really talking about stopping the building and there's, how do we go about doing that? And one is lot retirement. Back at the, like I said, back in the envelope, that's 800 million to a billion dollars. Where's that money coming from? I mean, are we talking a billion dollars on the coast side? Who's paying for this? Whose taxes are going to pay for? I mean, I, I just, if we're not gonna do it, it really isn't gonna happen. Well, our other, just be honest and saying, it isn't gonna happen unless and we plan for it to be 100% built out and deliver that reality and figure out how the end result looks like. And not the steps that we mitigate every five, 10 years to get there. Let's see. Your slide on safe routes slide, I liked your slide a lot. Because one of the things that showed was the wires. You look at that, there's wires all over that beautiful view, totally marred by wires. We're really talking about the community and we're really going to have density. The honest answer is density. You gotta put the wires underground to feel that you're keeping the character. You know, and that's something that just occurred to me. I, I think it's a good time for me to stop and hear other people's comments. So thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, on to Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. It seems after kind of like briefed over the report that we definitely need a multimodern, multimodern solution to implement this great plan. I kind of glanced at the report and I noticed some minor statements that I'd like to address, which I already kind of like discussed with some of the staff. And I really appreciate, thank you very much, Chanda, for taking my phone call yesterday. So, you know, some of the issues that I noticed that is like Commissioner, Commissioner Hanson just explained and nicely demonstrated in his experiences. The willingness and the buying from other agencies and the money where it comes from to implement this gargantuan project. You know, some of the discussion that I read in the report is Santrum. And like I discussed before, that kind of like a statement that that Santrum decreased service because there is no ridership. It's kind of like the situation who, who came, what came first, the chicken and the eggs? And my experience, my experience with Santrum is that service is so unreliable and so bad that people kind of like opt to drive their own car because they are afraid that they're gonna come late to work, that they're gonna come late to appointments because the, the, the Santrum service really sucks. And so maybe there's something that we need to go over on the report and kind of like discuss more in depth, what's the issue, not, not just to mention that the, that the, that the Santrum's service decreased because the ridership decreased and see what's the, what is the cause of that ridership decrease on, on service. And that would be something interesting to, to go in depth on that statement. Also, I, I read on the report, the bus stop and I can see that, and I discussed that with staff also, it would be nice to see in the report, the creation of bus stops that that are not poorly designed like they are right now. That they have no cover, they're not computerized sign, that explain the descriptions and the routing. So people who are not familiar with the area, like me, can go over and, and take a bus and know where to go from point, point A to point C. And then also, some of this bus stop will definitely need an ADA accommodations because I will say 90% of them are not. Such as explained on page 69. Also, also I noticed that on page 72, I, I read the chart, which is very interesting, but I would suggest maybe at the bottom. Sort of like described some sort of like cross references, they're color coded on the bottom. So people who read it, they don't have to go back and forth between one page and other to, to understand the different color that you guys use on page 72. Also, in my experience going to Half Moon Bay and Montara and, and those areas on weekends, it's, it's kind of like difficult because it takes a long time because the number of cars. I share my experience in other countries that I have visited, that they have so, so called weekend tour buses that, that could be a schedule from Daly City and from bar station closest to the area. For instance, Daly City, I don't remember the other, the other that is close to Daly City, Colma, I think it is. That they can label weekend tour buses that can bring people into their area. And thus maybe a long range and then avoid people driving. And, you know, it could be drop in and drop off services that to avoid this number of people going over there because we see the number of car increases tremendously, especially on the weekends. Also, I noticed that, that this will require, require tremendous buying with different city governments involved in this project, such as where are we gonna get the money? Where, to implement some of these specific projects and sort of like understanding that if we talk about taxes, people are getting sick and tired of getting paying more taxes and we need to see where the taxes are going, specifically per project that benefit us in, in the area, you know. Let me see another thing. Well, last but not least, how, I'm gonna ask, how could we as a planning commission do to align with this long range project vision when discussing and approving current level of small project in these differing areas? How are we gonna know which project are supposed to be aligned to this long range 30-year program with regard to land use, protected, tricutting and et cetera? I think that's something that we see as a challenge as a planning commission. Because we need to work in tandem with you guys and making sure that what's gonna be our role? How can we help as a commission, as a commission to, to, to to be stricter in approving or, or disapproving a specific project in the area? But all in all, thank you very much. I, I really liked the, the project and, and implementation. And you know, I, I really learned a lot by reading it. Thank you, Chanda, and, and Joe, and, and your staff.
Okay, I'll chime in now. In, in my seven years on the Midcoast Community Council, I was deeply involved with this project since the first TAC meeting in September 2014. I think James, James Hinkamp was the planner back then. It, it has been quite an evolution of transportation projects. I mean that in a good way. This complete rewrite incorporates local context and previous planning efforts. I want to thank all who contributed. It feels like we were heard. The document is thorough and readable with depth of detail and process and related issues raised by the public and a wealth of information about transportation planning policies and funding. For community members who have had questions and concerns about the project as it has evolved, the document is well worth a thorough read, probably not all at one sitting, but it will, it also will be a great reference as time goes on. Regarding the delay index, I understand and support the concept. But if at least 80% of the existing mostly standard width paved shoulders on Route 1 are simply striped for class 2 bikeway, that hardly seems enough to decrease, to increase the delay standard from two to three. It's, I think it's hard to reconcile the reported existing conditions with our actual experience. We're seeing that with climate change, beach day traffic can occur frequently any time of the year. It, oh, another thing, it might help as the delay index could be compared with the red or maroon lines on the Google Traffic Max. Just to kind of orient what this is, what that means. A key missing piece of our experience, of course, is the delay through the city of Half Moon Bay. The, the political, you know, in this plan, there's just this blank there. We all know from experience that that's the heart of it, the problem. The political fragmentation on this integrated problem is somewhat surreal. So regarding land use policies, the problem seems to be the midcoast is cursed with legacy subdivisions rushed through by land speculators during the railroad construction, both of which failed within less than 20 years, 100 years ago. The grid subdivisions ignored topography and did not anticipate the quick evolution of auto travel and failure of the railroad, which was the consequence, it was the centerpiece of their layout. We're left with an unrealistic build out potential due to private property rights with road constraints seemingly impossible to remedy. I would like to explore more robust land use policies to reduce maximum build out. Instead of sequential implementation and evaluation, why can't these be done concurrently? Opportunities are being lost while we delay. Can the county impose a subdivision moratorium? For lot retirement, strictly limited, strictly limiting the retired parcels to RMPAD zones ignores legal parcels adjacent to parklands or where needed for shoreline retreat planning or in sensitive habitat or buffer zones such as Montecito, Reparian Corridor, or in high fire hazard areas such as El Granada Highlands, both which, both of those adjoin but are inside the urban rural boundary. The, the 2016 Diet and Bodya report included policies to incentivize lot retirement that have been used in Cambria. I would like to see those analyzed here and know why they were not considered. I would like to see the two maps of sites eligible for land use programs included. They were there at one time, but they're not there now. And please include the need for the Devil's Slide Bypass specific plan that is required by the LCP. This relates to the land use and build out issue. And as for implementation, the midcoast has accumulated many transportation planning projects over the years, but very little implementation. The challenges of implementation seem overwhelming as I read this report. I do hope we can get some near term interim projects accomplished, such as an acceleration lane for eastbound Cypress and some bare bone safety improvements of the bike pad trail along the east side of Route 1 at Montero Creek Ravine. So I will submit written comments as usual, which are most of mine are mostly minor detail edits and questions we don't have time for now. And I would encourage the, the public as well to, even if you speak today, to submit your written comments. So they're accurately included in the record. Now we will open public comment and I'll turn this portion open to, open to Ms. Luhon for this, to get us started.
Thank you, Chair. Let me just go ahead and pull up the timer. Let's see, we're now opening public comment for this item. If your hand is raised, your name will be called for this item. I will lower your hand after you speak. Those joining by telephone can press star nine to raise your hand. See, currently see one hand raised at the moment. Two, so the first one will be Carlisle Anne Young. Please accept this request, unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll, I'll try to be brief so I don't use up all my three minutes, but first of all, I, I really do think this is an improved plan, but the big elephant in the room that they haven't mentioned really is that there is no funding. So therefore, all the planning that they've been going through since 2014 is kind of futile. And I feel sorry for the county that has to keep rewriting this, this effort when nothing ever happens. So that's one thing. Secondly, increased development approved in a vacuum without consideration of the cumulative effects of all the traffic is probably the second biggest elephant in the room. And I will mention, you know, they, they've approved Big Wave, I believe they're And I will mention, you know, they they've approved Big Wave. I believe they're. They've slated to approve the Mid Pan Cypress Point Project. And there's so many traffic deficiencies with both of those huge projects that any lot retirement program is just a no nonstarter. It's not gonna happen. Visitor traffic and parking issues really need to be addressed now. We have so much COVID. Visitors now weekday and weekends. The fact that there's no evacuation plan. Keep putting it off onto other entities like the fire department, I mean CAL FIRE, etcetera. At the minimum, the county needs to clear the sides of the roadways where the choke points exist. Or just like the fire up in Paradise will be trapped when smoke and flames obscure the escape routes, especially. In the areas on Highway One between the tunnel and Pacifica. And also where the Eucalyptus Grove is and also on ninety-two. The roadways are so narrow, there's not even a way to have a breakdown lane along those portions, so. It'll definitely get jammed up. Many have suggested installing fast track or license plate readers. To charge for usage on the routes along the coast in order to help fund highway improvements for locals and visitors. I I really would support that. It would put the burden on the people in their cars. But we really need to look at the fact that this is, and I believe two commissioners pointed it out. It's a car dependent community. All the. Bike bike paths and walking paths, safe routes to school and everything is not gonna help people when we. We have to get into the gridlock to get to work or for people coming here. Wayfinding isn't really gonna help in an emergency, so I think the number one thing is the money. Second thing is the Half Moon Bay gridlock. And I I really, Lisa said eastbound Cypress needs an acceleration lane, but I think northbound Highway One. Needs an acceleration lane for Cypress, whether you're going north or south, especially if you're going north out of the west side. It's really hard to get onto the highway right there. I know they're talking about a roundabout, but they've been talking about that since. Well, I've lived here since eighty-eight and I still have to get a backup to move out of that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I will next call on Anne. Anne, please accept this request, unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hello, thank you so much. And I I really appreciate all the time and effort being put into this plan. And like others, I just want to make sure that the safety, particularly emergency. Access is is extremely important, that that be considered. As well as environmental impacts. There are endangered species. Particularly in the Moss Beach area, and I just want the design to be mindful of that. Particularly when you talk about roundabouts, that requires a large amount of land in order to use that. I'm just concerned the how that will impact an endangered species and also with the trails. I want to make sure that. Sensitive habitat is not encroached upon. And finally, I I I also am concerned with an emergency evacuation, what a roundabout would do. Could people still get out quickly enough or will it just simply cause people to panic? And cause gridlock and that could cause lives to be lost. So I think all these things need to be. Planned for appropriately and designed appropriately. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next call on Fran Pollard, followed by Dan Hagerty. Fran, please accept this request, unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yes, I've been at this from the beginning also. And actually, I've, this is my fiftieth year in El Granada. And I helped create the local coastal plan and we're still working to to get things done. I think the evacuation plan is probably the most urgent thing we need. El Granada. We're surrounded with the eucalyptus trees, not just the Highlands, so something's got to be done about that and and. Clearing the vegetation on the highways going out on the highway. We need. You need to increase parking at the harbor, at Surfers Beach and for all the tourists that come. The Harbor District, I don't know if you know, they approved their plan for Surfers Beach and they cut. The number of parking by fifteen, I think. So I think you need to discuss that with the Harbor District. Surfers Beach is the most congested area on the coast and and with the signal also. They need to increase the parking. They they created a big plaza at Surfers Beach instead of adding parking. So they need to reverse that, cut the plaza in half and add parking. And parking should be on the west, along the highway. I know it's not supposed to be, but people do it. Keep the parking on the west side of the highway and not on the east side. And also parking in the harbor in those three blocks that they have coming in at Capistrano. That's usually empty. All that parking in the harbor is usually empty most of the year. And so they need signage for tourists to go park in there if they're going to the harbor or the beach. Or else keep driving on down the coast because until they find a place to park at another beach. Also, another reason for that is because Granada, one of the things I've worked on from for fifty years is. The Burnham Strip and we are decreasing parking there, that that illegal parking lot that's been there. Cause we're finally creating a Burnham Park and the parking is gonna be for parkgoers, not for tourists. So all the more reason Harbor needs to create create parking. And the erosion, if it's only at Surfers Beach, so if that needs to be. If the highway needs to be increased someday, not now, it's okay now. They can use the right of way and save the Burnham Strip. And residents need to clear trees also. They've got lots of big bushy trees all through El Granada that need to be cleared. In every residence, so. That's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard. I'll now call on Dan Hagerty, followed by Dolores Silva. Dan, please accept this request, unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, Dan Hagerty, El Granada, thirty-two year resident. I'm on the Midcoast Community Council, but I'm speaking for myself. Right now, I want to say I agree with Commissioner Gupta's. Thoughts on, you know, the whole coast side is a very special area and it's a special area for all. That, you know, especially the 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 visitors from, you know, the region. It's it's truly a special area. It should be cared for. I also agree with Commissioner Hanson that, you know, a lot of these pedestrian crossings gives a false sense of security. And there could be a better. A better, you know. Ways to solve the problem. And also, you know, as far as away finding, you know, character of the area, anything needs to be really. In line with the character, preserving the character of the area. So I'm I'm overall very kind of disturbed about the whole connect coast side process. It's been long, very hard to follow. I think most, majority of the public doesn't even really know where it's at. It's just, it's just really taxing. There's been a lot of changes, different, going in different directions. I'm very upset. That pedestrian underpasses have not been. Really seriously looked at, been kind of blown off quickly as, oh, it's damp and. Dimly lit. There's three pedestrian underpasses in Pacifica just to the north that are currently being used. And frankly, you know, the system, Highway One, wouldn't be able to work as it is if they were not there. There's also a couple down in Santa Cruz. There's more being planned down in Southern California. These pedestrian underpasses are working very well where they're needed. All over California, United States, and frankly, all over the globe where they're needed. They are used and you do not have the problems. Yes, it is true that some were built. In times when they were needed and their their need was no longer, they just weren't used and then they go to disrepair. That is true. But I don't find, I do not believe that. They will not be used and it's just, the only way, it's only tax, it's only way to. Tax pile, tax dollar expenditure that will actually improve traffic flow and safety. I also wanted to quickly talk about the roundabouts. You know, I agree that if there was a. Even balance of input of the intersections, a great idea. We do not have that on Highway One. We have a dominant flow of Highway One. What they will do, these roundabouts, they will cause traffic shockwaves. You could look that up on. YouTube, there's plenty of examples of what happens, you know, when cars lightly brake to slow down. It just sends a shockwave up and then, you know, a half mile down the road, you have stopped traffic. In fact, roundabouts on Highway One would require a car on Highway One going up. To actually stop if there is a, already a car in the in the roundabout, so.
Did you wrap up?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm concerned with the roundabouts. And I'm really concerned with the overall, just the enormous enormity of the of the Connect Coastside project. Very difficult to follow. Majority of the community has no idea really what's in it. Things, I think it needs to slow down and. Make it simple, more simplify it and give more thought to the to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Our next call on Dolores Silva, followed by Simone. Dolores, please accept this request, unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hello, again, thank everybody for their efforts on this report. I do wanna mention a couple of high level points that. Are sort of in there, but not exactly. We really have two categories of traffic. And if we're trying to decrease the volume by some of these. Proposals for pass and whatever, I think we need to understand that. I mean, local traffic at commute hour. Is heavily driven by the schools and, you know, again, there's no school buses in here. There's no real. Discussion of what might be done there, but I think that could really help commute time. And then the other category is visitor traffic. It's grown. It'll continue to grow. There's no reason to expect that it. Isn't relentless and it's very difficult to get here from other places without a car and to, especially to recreate. I mean, you're going to bring your stuff or your family and so I don't see how this is going to. Help improve traffic. It might make it a little safer, but if anything, having even more trails and more recreation options. We might just get even more visitor traffic, so I'm not sure that any of this is gonna decrease volume. And the other couple of question, points that I'd like to make is that. As we see it now, the cost is so tremendous, it's it's makes it almost unbelievable. And the fact that we're gonna go through this for the next foreseeable future, year by year, project by project. I mean, where where is the big picture that we can look at and say, oh, yeah, this plan has a chance of succeeding? We don't even have costs. We don't have CAL Trans input. We don't have SAM Trans to know. I mean, it makes it very hard. To believe that this is really a plan if we don't have our arms around that. And also, what about the overall environmental impact? Are we gonna do environmental impact reviews, project by project? What about the whole big picture? I mean, I'm very concerned about that. We've been very concerned about that for some time. And I really wish that. This actually waited until you get this other, what is it, this hazard? Review that you're doing, expect to finish by September. Why are we trying to finish this without that being done? And I would like for you to consider waiting until that because evacuation is on everybody's mind now. So thank you again for your efforts. I think we've come a long way and I look forward to more information as this continues to. Be revised. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. Our next call on Simone Nagyon de Le Steng. Please accept this request, unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hello, thank you for your time today. My name is Simone Najand de La Taw. I am a trail planner at the Bay Area Ridge Trail Council. The Bay Area Ridge Trail is an envisioned five hundred fifty mile multi-use trail that follows the ridge lines. Of the entire Bay Area through all nine counties. Currently, we're at three hundred ninety miles, but. There are forty-eight of our miles already open in San Mateo County and we have twenty miles planned. That have been in long term plans for at least to be open in the next ten years. This year, we all saw firsthand just how essential public recreation and public access are for the outdoors. And how essential they are to community health and well-being. And we believe that creating opportunities to connect trails with existing public transit resources. And all of these new bikeways is something that could help alleviate the large amount of traffic that's associated with recreation in San Mateo. We just wanted to take a moment to thank the team for including one of our projects, the in the plan. This is the bicycle and pedestrian crossing of Highway ninety-two, kind of at the intersection with Highway thirty-five and Skyline Boulevard. This project is essential for connecting our regional trail network. And is one of the only barriers to completing over a hundred miles of continuous trails from San Mateo County to North Marin. Additionally, it's the location of an existing park and ride and bus stop serving residents on the coast side and in the peninsula. So we just hope that this project and similar projects to connect recreational trails with public transit opportunities. And with more bikeways are prioritized for implementation in the future and just wanted to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just a reminder, if you're calling by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Chair Ketchum, that was the last hand raised. I don't know if you want to give it a few seconds to see. Okay. There's a hand. I see Lenny Roberts. Lenny Roberts, please accept this request, unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. This is Lenny Roberts. I assume you can hear me. I am going to submit some written comments, but I just wanted to make a couple of observations. As some of you are aware, staff is aware, are, we we are concerned that. By focusing so much on all the roadway improvements or changes. Along Highway One particularly and also on ninety-two. But not within Half Moon Bay. We are losing sight of fundamental purpose of the congestion management. The C T M P Connect the Coastside Plan, which is to. You know, come into conformance with the policy of the local coastal plan that includes requiring studying. The build out of the midcoast and Half Moon Bay and how build out. What the traffic conditions that build out will do to the ability of the public to access the coast. Which is a, you know, very high level requirement of the Coastal Act. So the the lot merger program. Which has been on the county's books for years, still is being not prioritized. It should have been put in place for a long time ago. We would urge that you, that the county. Move forward with that mandatory lot merger of lots that are in common ownership where one of the parcels is not developed. And the lot retirement program seems to be focused on the rural area. Where there are very few parcels that could actually be. Retired. I think the focus of the requirement for looking at that was in the in the urban area. So we'll be, we'll be making some written comments about this, but I just wanted to call those two things out. The, you know, this is a very long range plan. Obviously, there is no money to do all of it or even a lot of it. And the two things that are really important are to look at whether the build out of the coast side can. And the two things that are really important are to look at whether the buildout of the coast side can accommodate the residential, the traffic that will be generated by residential development. So thank you very much. And you'll, I will provide some written comments.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Chair Ketchum, I see no more hands raised.
Okay, may I have a motion to close public comment?
I saw move that we close the public portion.
Second.
May I have a motion second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye. Public comment on this item is now closed. Thank you all for your input. And I, I see there are many more in the audience. I just urge you to the public to submit your written comments as well and in complete form so that the, to the project planner. I will be interested to read them. Does staff wish to speak to any of the issues raised at this point?
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. I'll take the opportunity to start and then pass it back to the team. First, let me thank the team and all the participants. It has been quite a work in progress and it's great to hear the reception that we've gotten on this rewritten plan. And I want to thank the Commissioners for your feedback today. I think you've raised some very important points and I'll just touch on a couple of them and then let the team dig into some more as they feel appropriate. So recognizing the challenges of accommodating the full buildout of the coast clearly has been a long-term been a challenging thing for county staff and the planning commission ever since, you know, we've been in business. In fact, when you look at all the various updates that have been processed to our local coastal program, you'll find that infrastructure limitations and service capacity limits have been a driving force in all of them. Be it sewer treatment, be it water supply, and now we're coming to grips with our transportation challenges. So you know, our ability to effectively solve them, as the commission has pointed out, relies on many things that are outside our direct control. But I would say that that does not diminish the importance of doing this type of planning and doing our best to move forward with these needed improvements despite the many challenges that we're likely to face in terms of getting by and from other agencies and finding the financing. So clearly, these are major constraints we'll need to address. But in my mind, that does not diminish the value of our plan. With regard to the land use issues, I think, you know, there have been comments that imply that hasn't been an important part of our planning efforts. And while it might not, you know, take up the largest portion of the plan, I just wanted to let the Commissioners and the public know that staff recognizes that that is clearly an important component to our efforts here. Lot merger, lot retirement, these are all things that we are carefully considering and will be moving forward with. But as Chair Ketchum pointed out, it's the antiquated subdivisions we're dealing with. Those are very difficult to undo. And, you know, while I think we all share the interest in moving forward with that, we need to make sure it takes place in a manner that's legal and also that makes sense. And I appreciate all the feedback we got about how we can maybe improvement upon the lot retirement concepts we've brought forward already. And we look forward to engaging with you all on those things. Finally, protecting the character of the coast. Clearly, that is of highest importance. We believe it's consistent with what we're trying to do with our plans. And once again, the Commissioners' feedback on those issues is really valuable. So thank you for that. I'll turn it over to Joe and be available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you Commissioners and public for all the input that we got today. It's really, really helpful to hear your, your input to help make this plan better and more responsive to the community. And I'll, I'll make a few points and then I'll pass it over to Katie and to Chonda. So one of the things that has been expressed as a concern is the agency commitments and funding and the sort of realistic nature of this plan. Of course, the first thing I believe that, that the county needs to do is to create a plan. Because without a coherent strategy for addressing both the land use and the transportation issues on the coast side, it's difficult to convince funding partners that you know what you're doing and that, that what that, that they ought to invest in what it is you're proposing. So one of the follow-on objectives that's called for in the plan is to get this, get the projects in Connect the Coastside recognized in countywide and regional plans. We have, you know, the Congestion Management Agency is, is CCAG and the Transportation Authority is the funding arm of, of the county on transportation projects. So we need to ensure that, but they both embrace this plan as well as Caltrans' vision plan for Highway one needs to be modified to incorporate these initiatives. And we have been working with Caltrans, with SAM Trans on, we're, both Chonda and I are participating in the reimagined SAM Trans planning effort, focusing on getting them to incorporate both increased service to the coast side and the ideas of shuttles on the weekends to improve access to the coast for folks that would like to come here without a car. And of course, this, once, once you're in the regional plans such as MTC and ABAG's Plan Bay Area, which is the regional transportation plan, then it's easier to compete for funding. And of course, we'll be writing grants. And whether it's at the local state or federal level, we'll look at whether the future sales tax measures that are passed in the county should list specific projects that are identified in Connect the Coastside. We're proposing a transportation impact fee so the development in the future would have to fund transportation improvements that are identified in this plan. And we've already developed a partnership with CK, Caltrans and the Transportation Authority. We meet quarterly and discuss projects that they have proposed. So one of the things we found out last Friday is that Caltrans will be repaving Highway one from south of Half Moon Bay to Southern Moss Beach. And they're looking at whether or not they can incorporate bicycle lanes as part of that project. So Caltrans has a number of projects that they intend to pursue over the next few years on the, on the highway corridor. And part of our goal is to, and they have a program called the SHOP program that we intend to get these projects integrated into. And then I thought that Commissioner Ramirez's proposal for a tour is a great idea, but challenging. So I think maybe we can put together video, drone video and a way of bringing the site to you in the future that, that will enable that kind of conversation about the site-specific conditions and impacts of some of the proposals. And I'll stop there and hand it over to Chonda and Katie to respond to some of the other questions and comments.
Thanks, Joe. And I just, you know, I really want to thank the Commissioners and the public for all the time that you have spent throughout this planning process and reading the revised plan and documentation. I think we recognize that it is long. It's a lot to digest. We were really just trying to do our best to make sure we addressed the stakeholder comments. And I'll just say, as somebody, you know, new to San Mateo County, all of your feedback has been so helpful in, you know, having, understanding your concerns and, and what the mid-coast is and who lives there and who the stakeholders are. And so we've we made that effort to imbue that in the plan. So I really appreciate the continued feedback on how we can do better and continue to address your concerns and, and make it representative. I guess, you know, I think Steve and Joe covered a lot. I think I'll just wanted to remind everybody that we will be doing an environmental document. That's sort of our plan is to update the plan in the coming months. And in addition, prepare environmental documentation. As projects move forward, as Joe has said, we know, once we are able to seek funding and do detailed project design is one will be able to really dive into the assessment of environmental impacts and what can be done. And if there are specific mitigations, we are aware of some of the endangered species concerns and modify some of the projects, like the location of the parallel trail in Moss Beach for that reason, to avoid habitat. But, you know, overall, as we move forward with individual projects, you know, and that detailed design, that's sort of when some of those other issues will come to, come to light that we'll have to address. And I appreciate either the feedback on the project design and hear you on, you know, what's the right tool to address the problem that we're seeing from Commissioner Hanson and the concern around stop signs. You know, the county does have a residential speed management program that really has to be, you know, led by residents to request traffic calming devices. And but, you know, we, you know, I'll definitely take a look and we'll take a look at some of those projects to see if there are other modifications that might be needed. And I think, again, we didn't want to be too prescriptive knowing that in detailed design, we're going to have to do more community engagement and really, you know, engage the residents on that street and those stakeholders specifically to come up with those, what actually will happen. And I'm going to take a pause. Katie, anything? I'm going to keep looking at my notes.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Chonda and Joe and Steve. I think you've covered a lot of the big points that we heard. And thank you for everyone for sharing your thoughts. I think, you know, that just helps us make the plan all that much better. Let's see, one thing I think we maybe haven't addressed yet is I heard a few comments about Half Moon Bay and how, you know, we don't have recommendations for Half Moon Bay in this plan. And I would, I would recommend taking a look at the Landes plan that Half Moon Bay just was working on and just adopted because a little bit, we have a bit of a bookend there, a bit of a puzzle where, where we are looking at the unincorporated area and then Half Moon Bay was just doing a similar, a similar kind of project for, for Half Moon Bay. And so there are in that plan, there are delay index numbers. There's a discussion about, about traffic and future transportation improvements. And so I would say, take a look there. And, you know, we've been talking with Half Moon Bay to make sure that, that our work is complimentary. And so I would suggest taking a look at that plan. And let me see, Chonda, I don't know if you have, if you found another one you want to address.
Um, you know, just the note on the comment from the public on, on parking. And we, we heard a lot about that during our outreach process that especially with the pandemic, that travel patterns have really changed. And when the state closed public beach parking in order to deter people from going to the beach, it didn't really deter people from coming to the coast. And a lot of people were parking in the neighborhoods. There was a lot of unintended consequences there around litter and garbage and, you know, just general disrespect. So you, we, we absolutely hear you on the need for thinking about how to manage parking and what that looks like. And we had a couple of preliminary conversations with some partners about other strategies like shared parking. Where, you know, a parking lot that's used during certain daytime, say during one day of the week, if it's not being used the rest of the time, perhaps there are, people, people could use that. And I, there's just a lot more detail and liability and things that need to be worked out, which is why we're recommending the follow-on parking studies because we just think that that is going to require a really holistic look that goes a lot deeper into the issues, recognizing that there have been parking studies and inventories in the past, but that there might be some more policy solutions to help manage parking. So really appreciate those comments and, and that highlight.
Chair Ketchum, if I might also mention that we will commit to report back to you and, and to the public on the status of evacuation planning as well as vegetation management in, in the coast side. There's a strong recognition throughout the county that there's a need to address eucalyptus and other flammable plants, given the changing climate and the changing fire regime that comes with it. And so we're working with the, with the San Mateo County Resource Conservation District to explore ways to streamline permitting for eucalyptus removal, both on private property and seeking funding for larger scale projects on public, public property. And all, all in recognition of the comments that were made by the public today that there's a real need to address fire threat. And, and so we'll commit to bring that back to you in the future. As this plan.
Okay, is that all from staff for now? Do Commissioners want to make any closing comments? We could start with.
I had a question.
Okay.
For maybe Joe or Shanda. Once this document is approved in, by September, what is the next step?
Are, are you referring to the?
This draft that we are reviewing.
Yes, well, then we would begin implementation immediately. So for example, we would, we would program, we would begin work on all of the early action items that are identified in the plan. Of course, those may be changed based on the public review process that we're going through now. But the intention is to move, move to implementation. And some of that implementation actions will include amendments to the local coastal program to integrate not only whatever we settle on in terms of traffic standards. We discussed the delay index today. But also related to that, we need to address vehicle miles traveled standards that are now part of the traffic lexicon based on recent state legislation and we, we need to integrate that into the local coastal program. So I see that there's a number of both work on seeking funding for specific projects, planning for parking and other, you know, planning projects, launching the land use policy. Basically, a number of early implementation actions that would follow from this.
Okay. Because I see, I think in the executive summary, there's a table one, which has a whole list of, a list of projects. Right? I don't know how I can show you, but this is the table. So have some items out of this been identified that these are the first ones? Assuming no major change takes place between now and September, that those, those are the first ones to be implemented or worked on implementation.
Yes. So in the plan and the implementation chapter, and I'm just trying to find the page number, and there's a table at the, towards the end. Believe it was table 34. Yes, table 34 on page 168, which is entitled Early Implementation Actions, where we've identified of the items and Yes, table thirty four on page one sixty eight, which is entitled early implementation actions where we've identified of the items in the plan. What we feel county built planning and building staff will be able to start spearheading in collaboration with partners. And so I think that's what Joe was referring to is, you know, some of, we see some of these, you know, continuing to change as we get public feedback and hear more about what the priorities are. But this is what we've identified sort of preliminarily with the existing staff capacity that we have to be able to start working on.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, anything to add?
Here, I'm, I'm muting. That's always, because you always forget you're on mute. At least I do. Yeah. So some of the things I heard here, especially when attached on what Mrs. Lenny Roberts said, as we've been dealing over the years with this situation of the, the lot retirement and lot mergers. I, and Commissioner Hanson touched on this. I would like to know, you know, or do a study, I guess, on how we can really make this feasible. Because I think it comes down to money, a lot of money in, in order to implement some of these things. So I, I hear a lot of people complaining about this, but I don't hear any real solutions as to how this actually gets implemented and how we acquire money so that we can actually get to some point where we can actually get it done. Because this thing of, you know, the way we go about it right now, it's voluntary, voluntarily getting people to do it. I don't think that will ever get us anywhere. So how we move forward and actually do something to, to implement and, and, you know, have something that is actually concrete. And again, that takes money. What else did I hear on this? Yeah, the vegetation management, I think is, is very important to address also that. You know, as we move forward and with the climate change and the more fire danger that comes every year. So I would like to hear more about that. Parking and the visitor. You know, the, the visitor, I guess, problem that we have here is that the traffic, how, how this increases the promo traffic and visitors. And I really think I've been, I've been studying and kind of looking at situations from different places around the world and how they have looked for solutions, think out of the box. And I'm thinking of places like Mexico City, where they have done basically at certain times, Mexico City stops and also London actually does this, stops traffic from coming into the area in order to prevent gridlock on the roads. Now they implement, you know, excellent ways of transporting people from outside the city into, into the areas that needed, people need to go to. And for that, they offer different ways. I mean, they, you know, they, they, they give incentives so people don't bring their car. And they charge a lot of money for parking if they really want to bring their car. But they, they create solutions. I mean, special buses, especially, you know, different ways of bringing people into the city. So I just think that we need to think a little bit out of the box as to how we move people in and out. Since we know, you know, in the summer, a lot of people come over to the area. Having parking areas outside, you know, of this area so that we can have buses that directly move people in and out so that we minimize, you know, people having to come in with their cars. And parking being probably expensive so that we deter people from bringing them into the area. So anyway, I'm just saying, we need to think out of the box as to how we manage, you know, people visiting and, and parking traffic. It's all in the same. Moving to implementation. Yeah, I would like to see, you know, what, what are some of the projects on this that would make the most impact to the area? You know, and, and the, the easier, the easier ones to implement and get them done as soon, you know, getting the funding, obviously. But what would be the easiest that we can tackle and achieve and get funding for? I would like to see something like that addressed. I think that's all I'm gonna say for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson.
Again, thank, thank you everybody for your comments. One thing I'd like to personally address is the roundabout issue. One of the examples in the report shows one across the creek and Truckee. Truckee has seven runabouts. One of the series of roundabouts is the intersection of eighty and eighty nine for people getting off the freeway onto eighty nine, going to Spa Valley and Lake Tahoe. I have been going to Truckee almost every other weekend for twenty something years. And after they put the roundabouts, the backup diminished. Diminished significantly on the freeway even because it could move traffic effectively. And also clean up the air a little bit in Truckee because no one's sitting at a light or stop sign. And that improved the air quality in the area. That's why Truckee ended up embracing seven. Now that's the size of Half Moon Bay. And it really redid. And it's continued to add more and planning for more roundabouts. You can found it that effective. So I, I would say, you know, thing I think the most unanticipated consequence, both there and Truckee and in the town of Corvallis, where I just spent a week, is when you put one in, it sparks anger. Real anger about people who are used, not used to giving yielding in a circle. They will drive through the center and damage plants to prove their point. I've saw this in both places. But it takes, after a year, everybody look, has works their way into it. But if you don't anticipate the anger and maybe putting planners or something in the center to keep people from going through the center is a consideration. Like I said, there's always unintended consequences. I'm lucky. And I want to say I like the report. I like where it's going. The biggest thing always for me is what is the long term in what we're planning for? And I don't want to keep coming back doing implement updates to, oh, now that we got an extra five hundred homes in the area, what do we do? Because if we plan for, you know, really work, if I do a quick read, that it all were expecting fifty percent increase on the coast side. That is because the number of lots there plus the ability to pull administrative permit for a second unit in a, in a house. You know, we're really looking, I think, fifty percent increase. And that's just my take on it. So if it's wrong, you know, give, give me a head slap. But otherwise I will run that along in my head and for the future thinking about things. And I support, I overthink all the comments I heard from the other commissioners.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Santa Cruz.
I hear the feedback from people who are the, people who talk over the phone. And I'm not sure, Shonda or Joe, while I read the report, that I see any timeline that maybe we can divide the project between shore, midterm and long range. You know, kind of like the timeline with which projects, the little different kinds of project will be from the more important to the least important and divided between what we do now, what we do in five years and ten years or so. And then also maybe add a little bit of another section that can, that, that maybe we can call funding sources, a potential funding sources. Ideas that you as a, as a planner will consider a possible funding source that you can propose to implement some of those projects. And, you know, that will be also good in part of the project. So people know the length of the responsibility and the money that is required to implement this big, huge project. That's my last two comments.
Okay. I had a couple of points on the public comments. So Carl Al Young, I, I just, I was saying basically the same thing as you were about the accelerating in Cypress that I, I wasn't asking for anything different than we've been asking for since this was approved in twenty fifteen as a near term project. And the, and I also wanted to add that the, I had asked this for this previously, would be helpful to see a complete map. I mean, I understand Half Moon Bay has their LCP, their, their transportation recommendations, but the result of the two would be helpful for us to just see the map with the delay index through the whole route, just so we get a sense of what we're talking about, that this is actually proposing. As far, that would be nice to see. And then another point about the parking, people have brought up the, in Miramar, a real opportunity in Miramar before it all gets built over is parking there off of Magellan near the trailhead at Marotta Surf, where at that end of the park, a parking there is not a problem and viewing the beach is not in the way. And it's, it, there's a restroom there and you could make an access down to the beach at that end of Marotta Surf, because that is actually as, as surface beach just ground, gets ground down to nothing. There's still an actual beach at that south end of Marotta Surf. So that's a real opportunity for visitor and anybody to park if there was space available to park down there. Other than that, I don't really have anything to add to what I said before. I'll send in my written comments and I think this was a great success and thank everybody for participating. So with that, we'll close that item and move on to the director's portion of the meeting.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Ketchum, and thank you to the commissioners for good discussion. So I don't have any correspondence to report other than the, the one piece of correspondence that Janice shared with you regarding the item we just discussed. It identified the potential for red legged frogs to be in the drainage ditch by Carlos Street. And that's certainly something that we recognize. Moving on to our next meeting, I'm not proposing the study session. We do have three items currently on the agenda. One is a permit for a new domestic well in the San Gregorio area of the county. Another is a general plan and zoning amendment for about twenty thousand square foot parcel in the Sequoia to go from medium density residential to high density residential. And then the third item is a grading permit for two thousand square foot addition to an existing home that's currently about three thousand, three hundred square feet. And that's in El Granada. So that will be our meeting for next. This is, this is the two twenty four meeting, that is. And then moving on to the director's report. I want to first turn it over to Joe Leclerc, who'd like to make an announcement. Joe?
Good morning again. And I just wanted to let the commission know that I'll be retiring at the end of March. I've had a great run working here with the county. I've really enjoyed working with all of you. It's been a real learning experience for me coming from regional government to work at the county scale. And you've taught me a lot in, in the last five plus years. And my wife and I talked it over and agreed that, that now's the right time for me to do this. And so I just want to thank you for giving me this great opportunity to, to work with the county and solve some of the problems that we have to deal with. And, and I know that you're going to be left in good hands. And I just wanted to thank you. Joe, I'm gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss all of you. It's, it's, it's been, it's really fantastic work. I mean, I've, I've done coastal work most of my professional career and I'm very passionate about it. And I, I, I feel like it's been great moving from the bay to the ocean. And but also, of course, there's a lot of interesting problems to solve in, in the, in the other areas of the county, but it's, it's going to be for somebody else to do.
We wish you well.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all you've done for us. Well, I learned a lot from you.
Well, I learned a lot more from all of you. So I, I'm very grateful for the, for the opportunity.
Congratulations, Joe. Well deserved.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Agreed. We will miss you very much, Joe, but we're very happy for you. And you're not gone till the end of March, so we might get you back in front of the planning commission one more time if we can, at least.
Yeah.
True, right. True, right.
Okay. Okay, so I, I don't have much else to report other than we had a successful first release of our new online permitting system that went live on February first. Currently, it is limited to what we call easy over the counter permits that have very simple review procedures. Our next release, which is scheduled for March first, will expand upon online permitting capabilities. So you'll be able to apply to do a residential remodeler addition. And then the subsequent phase will be for brand new construction. So things are moving well on that. And then the other item I wanted to touch on is an item that's come up since our last meeting. It relates to the new fire station that's been constructed in El Granada. There's been concerns about the lighting that was installed under the terms of the permit that was approved by this planning commission that, you know, is pretty typical condition to a coastal development permit that requires lights to be directed onsite to minimize, minimize light spillover onto adjacent properties and to do what we can to protect the night sky. So in the case of the fire station, the fire department submitted plans that included an analysis of the lights to comply with the conditions of approval. So the fire department made every effort to design their project in compliance with the conditions of approval. Staff reviewed those plans as well as the light study. And based on the information that was provided, concluded that the billing permit details were consistent with the terms of the approval. However, once the lights were constructed and installed, it became apparent that there were some spillover effects unintentional that we are working closely with the fire department to address. So there's been a lot of community interest in this issue. And we intend to provide those folks with the opportunity to review the fire department's plans to address this issue and provide comment on that. And that will be coming out in the next few days. So be happy to answer any questions about that or any other items that the commission would like to talk about. So that concludes my. be happy to answer any questions about that or any other items that the commission would like to talk about. So that concludes my report today. Thank you.
I have a question or actually suggestion for your online permitting. Could, could we get the link for that just to try it out?
Absolutely. I'll have Janet send you the link, but I'd also encourage you to go to the planning and building department's website because, you know, it's our objective that it should be clear to, to our applicants upon going to our website, how to find it, how to use it. So please feel free to, you know, search around the website and I welcome any feedback you have on the web and on the online permit portal.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had was, there was a mention last time about this Harbor Village RV Park that has been, there's an appeal going to Board of Supervisors. Is there any progress on that?
I, I do know that the planner is working on addressing the contentions of the appeal. I do not have a specific date for that hearing at this time. Janice, do you happen to know what date we're targeting to hear that appeal?
No, I haven't heard. But yeah, not until at this point, you know, end of March, if we're trying, you know, it could be a possibility or early April.
Okay. And my last question is, were there any budget impacts based upon what was approved yesterday in Board of Supervisors meeting?
Not directly to our department, no. You know, we are right now initiating the next cycle of our budgeting process. So we'll be looking at the next two fiscal years. We work on a two-year budget cycle. And so we're taking a fresh look at the department's budget and planning for some changes and also, you know, we'll need to refresh our planned expenditures when it comes to the types of long range projects we'll be working on and so forth. So there'll be more information to come on that, Commissioner Gupta. But for now, our, our budget is being held steady. And, you know, the county is currently under a hiring freeze because of budget concerns. There is an exception process available to departments that have critical vacancies that need to be filled. And I'm pleased to report that the county manager's office and the budget office had responded very favorably to the hiring freeze exemptions I've requested so we can fill some of our key vacancies. So I'm not expecting any reduction in our staffing or our ability to pursue contracts as we need to assist with long range planning and other projects. But I do have a critical need to find quality staff members to fill key vacancies like our planning manager vacancy.
That was, that was what I was thinking.
Yeah, so, so we have some holes, but we also have the authority to fill them. So yeah, the gaps in the work are unfortunate when we have to go through those, but we're doing our best to minimize those gaps.
Thank, thank you, Steve, for just.
Is there an estimated date for a long-term planning study session that you had mentioned?
Well, when I talked about getting Joe back in front of the commission, that was the I had in mind. But I understand there's also a strong desire to prioritize the tree regulations. So I'm gonna need to huddle up with Joe and get back to you on a specific date, but it's definitely something that we're planning on doing within the next month or two.
Oh, you mean you really, there is a chance that the tree rigs can get wrapped up?
I, I apologize. I didn't, I was talking more about the briefing to the planning commission, the work plan. But I, you know, Joe, do you want to touch on the timing of the tree regs?
I was just sort of teasing with that, but if there's a chance, that's exciting.
Well, we actually have been working on it. And I must say, I'm really pleased with, you know, the, the fact that we've been able to bring forward so many great public policy projects to you over the last six months, you know, with density bonus and, and second units and the childcare ordinance and now this. And meanwhile, Dan Krug and I, our county arborists have been working on some changes to the tree regulations. We're, we're trying to follow a model that's more consistent with what Palo Alto has done where the tree regulations include are a little bit more streamlined and then the accompanying tree manual that lays out in greater detail how to implement the ordinance. And it's both, we, we believe it's sort of more user friendly for the arborists, for, for property owners, for developers and for the public and, and decision makers to understand and use. We, we took the tack of shoveling all the regulatory or some of the guidance into the regulation and it became a little top heavy. So we're trying to take a slightly different approach and will perhaps be able to present something at a, at a high level when we talk about the long range work plan for the coming couple of years.
Sounds good. Anybody else? Questions? The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Good job.
Bye now.
Bye.